I call the meeting of the City Council for Monday, January 13th, 2020. Please stand and salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, councilors. Welcome to our new councilors. We have, this is your first official meeting. Welcome. Ward Five City Councilor Jeff Thompson and our two new at-large councilors, Tina Cardoso and Rita Mendez. Welcome.
Thank you.
And our returning councillor, councillor-at-large Moses Rodriguez, returning from the mayor's office. So, welcome, everybody. Happy New Year. And today, before we start our meeting, we actually have a guest in the chambers, our mayor, Robert Sullivan. Congratulations and welcome. And I know that the mayor had a few things that he'd like to make mentions beginning of the year, could have them at the beginning of the meeting.
Thank you very much, Madam President, and I want to congratulate the three new councilors. Job well done, and I look forward to working with all of you. This is a really good group of Brocktonians. In the spirit of my inaugural speech addressed the other day in terms of working together, I just wanted to let each and every one of you that this coming Thursday, which is at 10:00 a.m. at Brockton High School, Lieutenant Governor Karen Palito will be there at Brockton High. If you have the opportunity to go up there, you can meet in the principal, Dr. Cliff Murray's office. We're going to be talking about the Innovations Gateway Path, Path Gateway Grant at 10:00 o'clock this Thursday. I also just wanted to again reintroduce you to Kerry Richards, my chief of staff, who is always ready, willing, and able to help any of you. And then also, I just wanted to make it known that effective today Attorney Sean Murphy is the interim city solicitor for the city of Brockton. And with that being said, again, I thank you. I look forward to working with you and have a great 2020. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Clerk, can we have Agenda Item Number One?
We have the acceptance of the minutes of the December 23rd, 2019, City Council meeting.
Accepted and placed on file.
Acceptance of the minutes of the January 6th, 2020, City Council inauguration.
Accepted and placed on file.
We have a communication from the Director of Planning and Economic Development requesting that the City Council authorize the acceptance and expenditures of the grant award and the amount of $229,000 from the Department of Housing and Community Development Commonwealth Housing Choice Program grant to City of Brockton Planning and Economic Development Housing Choice Program grant fund. The grant funds will be used to fund the Keith Park pedestrian crossing improvements as part of a larger push to modernize and revitalize the Campelo neighborhood. This project will address the need for pedestrians' infrastructure that makes Brockton safer and more comfortable for the elderly and people with disabilities. No match is required.
Accepted and placed on file.
We have a communication from the mayor recommending the same.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the CFO relative to the same.
Accepted and placed on file.
We have a communication from the mayor in accordance with Mass General laws, Chapter 59, Section 25, requesting that the Board of Assessors determine the amount of excess overlay.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the mayor in accordance with Mass General laws, Chapter 44, recommending that the City Council authorize the total transfer of $4,750,000 from overlay surplus to law department court judgments.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the CFO relative to the same.
Accepted and placed on file.
We have a communication from the mayor in accordance with Mass General laws, Chapter 44, recommending that the City Council authorize the total transfer of $300,000 from overlay surplus to Human Resources Full-Time Salaries, $150,000, and to Human Resources Purchases of Services, $150,000.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the CFO relative to the same.
Accepted and placed on file.
We have a communication from the mayor in accordance with Mass General laws, Chapter 44, recommending that the City Council authorize the total transfer of $99,312.07 from the Police Department Full-Time Salaries to Mayor's Office Personal Services Non-Overtime, $74,498.60, and to the Law Department Personal Services Non-Overtime, $24,813.44, and in order to pay separation costs for former employees.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the CFO relative to the same.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the Mayor's Office Grant Coordinator recommending that the City Council authorize the acceptance and expenditures and the grant award and the amount of $600,000 from the Department of Justice Office of Justice Programs Comprehensive Opiate Abuse Site-Based Program grant funds to Brockton Mayor's Office Comprehensive Opiate Abuse Site-Based Program grant funds. The grant funds will develop a collaborative champion plan preventative model to provide additional resources for individuals suffering from substance abuse, disartis, HIV/AIDS, STI, HCV, educational services to the most vulnerable groups identified in the community. No match is required.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the mayor recommending the same.
Accepted and placed on...
Communication from the CFO relative to the same.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the Fire Chief requesting that the City Council authorize the acceptance and expenditures of the grant award and the amount of $250,000 from the Commonwealth of Mass Executive Office of Public Safety and Security to Brockton Fire Department. The grant is a SY2020 Massachusetts Public Safety Staffing Grant to be used for overtime necessary to maintain staffing levels. No match is required.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the mayor recommending the same.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the CFO relative to the same.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the mayor in accordance with the General Laws of Massachusetts, Chapter 44, recommend that the City Council authorize the total appropriation of $5,457,233 using the form of order with language as recommended by Attorney Richard Bandley of Lark &amp; Lord LLP, the city's bond counsel, in order to provide funding through borrowing set amounts is to pay the following cost: Cemetery Department capital, $650,000; Fire Department capital for two fire pumper trucks, $1,260,000; Information Technology capital, $448,000, and that is for information technology software, computer equipment, radio dispatch, microwave, and G.I.S.; Department of Public Works Water Division capital, $1,126,233, for U.S. Filters, CPL; Treatment Plant Water Main Replacement Program; Parks and Recreation capital, $1,973,000, for various capital items.
Accepted and placed on file.
We have a communication from the CFO relative to the same.
Accepted and placed on file.
We have a communication from the Mayor's Office Grants Coordinator requesting that the City Council authorize the acceptance and expenditures of the grant award and the amount of $4,855 for Mass Department of Transportation Safe Routes to Schools Signs and Lines Grant to Brockton School Department Safe Routes to School Signs and Lines Grant Fund. The grant funds will be used to install a solar-powered school speed limit sign and crosswalk and stop thermal line pavement markings on North Main Street at the intersection of Division Street and North Main Street. This will also include the installation of four no-parking signs on the west side of North Main Street adjacent to the school entrance. No match is required.
Accepted and placed on file.
We have a communication from the mayor recommending the same.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the CFO relative to the same.
Accepted and placed on file.
We have a communication from the Director of Planning and Economic Development requesting that the City Council authorize the acceptance and expenditures of the grant award and the amount of $200,000 from the Department of Housing and Community Development, DHCD, 40R Smart Growth Incentive, to City of Brockton Planning and Economic Development, 40R Smart Growth Activities. The incentive funds will be used, but not limited to Transit Village and other zoning work, Campelo District Revitalization Plan, Campelo District Improvement Plan, and programs.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the mayor recommending the same.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the CFO relative to the same.
Accepted and placed on file.
We have a communication from the DPW Commissioner requesting that Schedule B so-called sewer charges and fees of Article III Sewer and Sewerage Disposal, Chapter 23, Division 2, rates and charges of the revised ordinances of the city of Brockton be amended. These changes are necessary to address infrastructure needs throughout the city as well as reimburse the general fund. Restructuring the rates would bring an additional annual revenue of $1,900,000 for the water enterprise account. Implementing user fees would increase both the water and sewer enterprise funds by $2,300,000 each annually.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the city mayor, as recommended by the CFO and the Commissioner of the Department of Public Works requesting that Schedule B so-called sewer charges and fees of Article III Sewer and Sewerage Disposal, Chapter 23, Division 2, rates and charges of the revised ordinances of the city of Brockton be amended as described herein. One, Schedule B Annual Charges for Use of Public Sewer, reference Section 23-56. Delete current schedule of annual charges for use of public sewer and replace it with the following on the effective date noted below. Rate block quarterly usage per 100 cubic feet of water. Rates effective on all bills mailed on or after July 1, 2020. From $0.00 to $1,250.08. From $1,251 to $2,500, $7.06. From $2,501 to $5,000, $8.02. From $5,001 to $10,000, $802. From $10,001 to $2,508.02. And from $25,001 to $999,999,875. Section 23-25, fees and charges amended by adding a water user fee and a sewer user fee, $25, for the water account on all bills mailed on or after July 1, 2020. The recommended action will bring in an estimated $4.2 million of additional annual revenue to the water enterprise. In addition, sewer enterprise revenue will be increased by $2.3 million annually. The purpose of the rate change is to create equity within the block rate. The user fee for both water and sewer will support infrastructure investments and upgraded infrastructure, which will include new water and sewer mains as well as repair of roads.
Accepted and placed on file.
We have a communication from the CFO relative to the same.
Accepted and placed on file.
We have an order, an ordinance, amending Chapter 23, Division 2, Rates and Charges, Schedule B, for the revised ordinances of the city of Brockton be ordained by the City Council of the city of Brockton as follows: The Schedule B so-called sewer charges and fees of Article III Sewer and Sewerage Disposal, Chapter 23, Division 2, rates and charges for the revised ordinances of the city of Brockton be amended.
Refer to ordinance.
We have an order of rules and regulations governing motor vehicles for hire under Chapter 159A for carrying of passages.
Refer to finance.
We have an order Assessors to act as agents of City Council in matters of apportionment or betterments.
Refer to finance.
Order of the clerk to give notice of hairaches before the council.
Refer to finance.
Order of regulations governing the operation of hockers and peddlers within the city of Brockton.
Refer to finance.
An order of pawnbrokers are to deliver a list of purchased pawn articles to the chief of police.
Refer to finance.
We have an order...
Madam President.
Yes, Counselor.
If I might, I'd like to take Items Number 36, 37, 38 collectively and also suspend the rules and we act on all three of them this evening, if you might.
That counts.
And I know there's some people here to speak on it as well.
Yes, there are. So, before we vote, I would just like to announce that we have guests in the chambers today that if councilors, you have questions, you can ask them. We have our CFO, Troy Clarkson. We have our interim city solicitor, Sean Murphy. And of course, the mayor's here. We also have, I'm not sure if, who else, I mean, anybody that's here in the chamber that would like to answer any of the questions, if anybody has any objections.
No. The question, question would be no. I'm accepting to take them collectively.
Collectively, okay.
And then the second question would be on a vote of suspension of the rules to act on them this evening.
Okay. So, motion's been made and properly seconded to accept, to accept them, correct?
To accept them collectively.
To accept them collectively by show of hands?
And the second one would be to enact or suspend the rules.
And we'll...
Enact them this evening.
Yes. So, we're, so we're going to suspend the rules and act on them this evening. So, is that by hand vote? All those in favor of suspending the rules and acting on them this evening? The matter passes?
No objections.
No objections, okay.
Okay. And the mayor wants to speak.
We have Mayor Sullivan's here, so...
Madam President, thank you. And members of the council, thank you. And I do want to thank former mayor and our good friend, City Council-at-large Moses Rodriguez. The dollar amount before you, councilors, is relative, and we do have legal counsel here, and the CFO is relative to the settlement relative to the Lopes case that we're all aware of. And former mayor and now back at the City Council, Moses Rodriguez should be commended. He worked diligently with legal counsel to reach a settlement on that. There is a dollar amount attributed to that settlement, and that's what is before you this evening. If you have any questions for the CFO, by all means, he'll answer them, or outside counsel as well. That's the purpose of the agenda item. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilors, any questions? Council, Council Cruz?
Would you like them read first?
Okay. Would you, yes. Can we, we'll have them read first. Mr. Clerk?
Oh, sorry. I thought we had, yes.
Okay. Number 36. The order total transfer of $4,750,000 from overlay surplus to law department court judgments. Order total transfers of $300,000 from overlay surplus to Human Resources Full-Time Salaries, $150,000, and to Human Resources Purchases of Services, $150,000. And a total transfer of $99,312.07 from the Police Department Full-Time Salaries to Mayor's Office Personal Services Non-Overtime, $74,498.60, and to Law Department Personal Services Non-Overtime, $24,813.44.
Counselor Cruz?
Actually, just for the people at home, the new councilors, I'd like to, if we could get Mr. O'Donnell possibly to explain what the overlay accounts are and how they have usually been used in the past.
Good evening. The overlay accounts are used for, to pay exemptions, outstanding cases at the ATB, and abatements. So, the average over the last four years has been 1.4 million that, last five years, that we've paid out. So, there's ample money in that account.
And just for the, this is council, so I should be standing. Just for the public to understand, this money is generally put in the budget three to four years past that we have left over, and then we are able to take it out and use it. It's money that was held in abeyance for any settlements that might have been in the past.
Yes. Well, we had a large personal property, AT&amp;T and Verizon, so we had a whole millions of dollars in there, and that was settled three years ago. It only cost the city $350,000.
Thank you. So, mostly, I just am trying to ask you, just so the people at home know where this money's coming from.
Yeah, come, every year, every year.
And that it won't affect the city, the budget that we approved back in, back in June for this going forward. So, that's mostly what I wanted to get out. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, councillor. Any other questions? Mayor?
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to give some further information. So, Agenda Item 36 is exactly what I said. The 4.75 is relative to the settlement. The next agenda item, the $300,000, is relative to the settlement, but there's a condition to the settlement with mandatory training and hired positions within the HR department, Sandra Knight's office. That's what that dollar amount is. And then the last agenda item that you took collectively is relative to the $99,312.07. And let me just explain what that is. Some of the councilors that have been a while with other administrations understand that when a new administration comes in, certain people that worked for the previous mayor are not kept on. They are entitled, of course, under law to get paid benefits such as accrued vacation time. There's a factor in there also with the untimely passing of Mayor Carpenter. His estate was entitled to $46,000 of earned vacation time that the late mayor had. All those added up is exactly what that dollar amount is. And then the last piece would be to the law department. Again, there's just been a recent switch in this new administration for the city solicitor, and Attorney Nezarella is also entitled to separation costs, which is attributed to his earned vacation time as well. And that's what that agenda item is. If that is not approved by the council, my current budget will be short by almost $100,000. So, I'm hopefully asking you to consider that strongly. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Counsel, Counsel Thompson, please.
Thank you, Madam President. Just quickly, Mr. Mayor, this money's coming from the Police Department Full-Time Salaries. It's the administration's view that this transfer of monies will not affect the prospective overtime for the Police Department.
That's correct, City Councillor. CFO confirmed with the acting police chief, Mr. Williamson, today, and he opined and gave us an opinion that without question would not hamper the efforts of any projection cost on the Police Department, and that the transfer could be done in not a negative way whatsoever to the Police Department.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Thank you, councillor.
Any other questions? Counsel Cruz?
I'm sorry. I didn't realize. I do have one question, and this came up recently. And maybe Mr. Clarkson can answer this. Generally, in the past, and I think you thought it was not the case, but to transfer from one department to another, we needed a letter from the department that was, department head that was transferring the money. Do we have that letter for this transfer?
Thank you, Madam President. Troy Clarkson, CFO. No, we did speak to the chief. I did provide to the clerk a detailed analysis of the police budget, and my budget director, Karen Preval, worked closely with Acting Chief Williamson to coordinate this, and he has provided his assent. But no, I, we do not have a letter from the chief stating same.
Thank you, Mr. Clarkson. Oh, did you have another question, counsel?
Well, I'll vote on this tonight, but this came up back a few months ago, and you were of the opinion we don't need the letter, but I believe we looked into it, and we do. So, can we...
I will make a pledge, because I concurred with you that night when I was up there. And it's weird being here, I believe it or not. It's all right? Moses is very odd, strange thing standing here. If it's, if it's past favorable, councillor, we'll get a letter to the clerk's office by close of business tomorrow, Madam President.
Thank you, mayor.
Yeah, thank you.
No other questions?
Thank you, Madam President.
You're welcome. Any other questions? Councilors, seeing there's no other questions, there's been, a motion's been made and properly seconded. Can we have a roll call vote? Madam Clerk?
Asa?
Yes.
Cardoso?
Yes.
Yes.
Ian Eary?
Yes.
Farwell?
Yes.
Lally?
Yes.
Mendez?
Yes.
Monahan?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Ten in the affirmative, no opposition?
The appropriations pass.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, members of the council. Thank you.
Madam President?
Counsel Ian Eary.
Madam President, at this time, I'd like to move for reconsideration in hopes it does not prevail.
Motion's been made for reconsideration in hopes it does not prevail and properly seconded. All those in favor of reconsideration? All those opposed?
Reconsideration fails.
Consideration fails.
Madam President, if I might?
Councillor?
Just, just while we're still on this particular item. I also, too, want to thank City Council-at-large, our former mayor, Moses Rodriguez, for sitting down. One of the first things he did, I think, within a week's time, and I know the mayor will also side with me on this, is when he called myself and a couple other people into his office that he wanted to make sure that we were able to settle this, to sort of alleviate, as he's always said, a cloud that's been hanging over the city for the last few years, and I think it's, it's been taken care of. So, I do want to commend him for the work well done, and he kept right up with it, and he was determined that this was one definite thing that was going to happen under his watch, and it definitely did. And it may have also happened under Mayor Carpenter's as well, but he didn't have that opportunity to finish that. But no matter what or how, the man to the left of me could have taken care of, and with the rest of us here doing what we've done here this evening, and the new councilors as well being drawn into this, at least now, this cloud is alleviated, and let's hope that we don't have this ever, ever again hanging over our heads. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor. And I believe that those are all our sentiments. Thank you very much for all you did, councillor Rodriguez.
Where's my raise?
And thank you to the, to our mayor and the CFO's office, and I think the assessors' office, and Attorney Kirsten for all working together. I think they got a lot of information out to us. So, thank you for all your hard work and the city solicitor's office. So, thank you. And congratulations interim city solicitor. Okay.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you.
Thank you, members.
Next item, Mr. Clerk?
Acceptance of a grant for $600,000 from the Department of Justice Office of Justice Programs Comprehensive Opiate Abuse Site-Based Program Grant Funds to Brockton Mayor's Office Comprehensive Opiate Abuse Site-Based Program Grant Funds.
Refer to finance.
Order of acceptors of a grant of $250,000 from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Executive Office of Public Safety and Security Fiscal 2020 Mass Municipal Public Safety Staffing Grant to Brockton Fire Department, S, I shall strike that, SFY 2020 Mass Municipal Public Safety Staffing Grant Fund.
Refer to finance.
Order that the sum of $5,457,233 is appropriated to pay various capital costs as set forth, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto to Cemetery Department, $650,000, Fire Department, $1,260,000, Information Technology Total, $448,000, Water Department, $1,126,233, and Parks and Recreation Total, $1,973,000.
Refer to finance.
Order that the mayor of Brockton pursuant to the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A, be and is hereby authorized to accept grants from the Commonwealth Mass Works Program, and two, that the mayor of Brockton be and is hereby authorized to expend and take such other action as necessary to carry out the terms, purposes, and conditions of this grant to be administered by the Department of Planning and Economic Development, and three, that this order shall take effect upon passage, Housing Choice Grant in the amount of $229,000.
Refer to finance.
Order of acceptance and expenditures of the grant award in the amount of $200,000 from the Department of Housing and Community Development, 40R Smart Growth Incentive, to City of Brockton Planning and Economic Development, 40R Smart Growth Activities.
Refer to finance.
Order of acceptance and expenditures of the grant award in the amount of $4,855 from the Mass Department of Transportation Safe Routes to Schools Signs and Lines Grant to Brockton School Department Safe Routes to School Signs and Land Lines Grant Fund.
Refer to finance. Councilors, that concludes our agenda. Does anybody have any, anything that they would like to announce, or any moments of recognition? Counselor Monahan?
Thank you, Madam President. Just want to congratulate you on the fine job you did tonight. I noticed you didn't use the word reconciliation as somebody else did earlier. But congratulations, and I hope, I'm glad to be working with all you guys. We have a good year. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Counselor Farwell?
Madam President, this is just a request to you. The Ordinance Committee will eventually have to schedule a meeting to handle some of these items, and I have a request in, and I know Mr. Clarkson is working on it, for some information relative to uncollected water and sewer charges. And I would just like to ask respectfully to you, through you, to the Ordinance Chair, if we could have a little bit of time to, A, get that information and then digest it. We just hit our residence with tax bills, and for many people, they went up pretty considerably. Now, we're looking at water rate increases, and we're looking at a water and sewer user fee, $25 per quarter. So, that's $100 per year minimum that it would go up. And I would just like to, just my personal request, calm things down a little bit, give us a chance to digest exactly what's going on, ask some questions of... us a chance to digest exactly what's going on, ask some questions of Commissioner Rowley and Mr. Clarkson, and then at some point have the Ordinance Committee go forward with what they need to do. I'm just a little concerned that we're moving very quickly on things that are going to directly affect the finances of our residents, and I want to make sure that whatever we do is in the best interest of the city but also reasonable for them. So I thank you for any help you may give us.
Definitely. Thank you, Counsel Falwell. Any other councilors? Counselor Rodriguez?
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to remind the members of the council and also the public that are watching us tonight that we will be holding our annual market event at St. Louis Stadium, as we know. Chances are, actually, you could say, I know for a bachelor, I need a month because it's a holiday, but we will hold our annual event at St. Louis Stadium from 2 to 5. You're all invited, the public's invited as well. This is a program that we plunge to do in this city on a yearly basis as we're getting away from celebrating the day of the King himself, so I think it makes a lot of sense for us to return to that, seeing in the sense of doing this event, so it's here towards the other people, but us, the folks with the longer tooth and the gray hair as well who are invited to participate, so we're all expected to see all of you folks there as well as the public on Monday, at St. Louis Stadium. Thank you, too.
Thank you, Counselor, and as Counsel Rodriguez mentioned, we, it is Martin Luther King Weekend, and Monday is Martin Luther King Day, so we will not be meeting here on Monday night. Our finance meeting will be Tuesday evening at 7 o'clock. Counselor Thompson?
Thank you, Madam President, and just to piggyback on that, for the information of all the councilors and those at home, the Brockton area NAACP holds their annual breakfast that will be held this Saturday, January 18th, 9 to 12 o'clock a.m., 9 a.m. to 12 p.m. at Lombardo's this year. It's always a great event. Last year was a really good time, and I invite and welcome all of you to attend this Saturday.
It is, it's always a wonderful breakfast and a get-together that the NAACP does a great job putting on. So thank you, Counselor. Any other questions? No other questions before us this evening? I hereby adjourn this meeting.